Here.
Commissioner Jose Odena.
Here.
Commissioner Alonso Caruana.
Here.
Commissioner Luisa Talamantes. Commissioner Rudi Lopez.
Rudi Lopez.
Here.
We do have a court pledge of allegiance and salute to Texas by.
Pledge of allegiance to the life, safety of America and to the public who understands one nation and the government, the visible theory and justice for all.
On the Texas side, pledge of allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one in the name of the Lord.
Testimonial oath, representatives, anybody here present today, please be advised that you are on your oath. 1.5 Public comments. 1.6 Approval of minutes of special meeting May 20th, 2025, and regular meeting May 27th, 2025.
Subject to no correction, so.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Caruana.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 3.1 Approval of boxes began.
I do not. I was only expecting this and I didn't get it.
Okay. 3.2 Monthly report from Constable Precinct 1, Mr. Rudy Lopez, for the month of May 2025.
Morning.
Morning, Felicia.
Morning, Mr. Constable Lopez. You have a motion by Commissioner Rulcava. And a second by Commissioner Talamantes. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable. 3.3 Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Constable Precinct 2, Mr. Andres Arambo, for the month of May 2025. Morning, Constable.
Everything works in your unit?
Right now, we have trouble with the video camera, but I already contacted Abrav. They're going to take a look at it next week.
Good luck.
Yeah, he's behind us.
He's very backed up. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Caruana.
Second.
Who wants a second?
I know there's some that are back to 12 to 18 months.
Yes.
Since he installed me. Since he installed me. He can just, he said he's going to check the views of it to provide, but it was working just off, it's just a blank, so I'm going to move it accordingly.
Mr. Castaneda, the constable saying that the mic's not working, I'm not sure if it's working or not.
I'm doing good. I'm doing good. She was just supposed to come and put a relay switch on one of the fire trucks that's losing power and it's been three, and he has a relay, it's been three months, and he said it was coming the following weekend, and I haven't seen it since. And it keep losing power on the fire trucks. And he, he might want to, I don't know what to tell you.
I'll, I'll contact him.
Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Caruana, second by Commissioner Talamantes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.4 I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Rulcava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.5 Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Constable Precinct 4, Mr. Mano Tossas, for the month of May 2025.
Morning, Judge.
Morning, Constable.
Good.
Have you got your truck?
Yes.
You got all the stickers put on it? I like the white one.
Questions of Constable Tossas?
Oh, you're getting your truck? Yes, love it. It's good, it's doing good, so, uh, been out there, stay a lot, definitely remember the things that work choice, that's.
Would you buy it with that in mind?
Yes.
That's awesome. Hold it to a fruit.
Those are different colors, sorry.
Yes. I have a motion by Commissioner Rulcava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Constable. 3.6 Discussion and appropriate action, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement with the city of Curazo Springs and Demet County. Commissioners, as you are aware, the last time that we had a meeting, a joint meeting with the city of Curazo Springs, we had agreed on the responsibilities of the parties, as you can see in Article 1 and some other terms of agreement in the contract. However, as you are all aware, we did receive an email sometime last month regarding the city council had had another meeting and changed the terms of the agreement and approved the terms of the agreement contrary to what we had approved at that joint meeting. If you can recall, on Article 1, Section 1.01, on the brush pickup, we had agreed that it would occur six times out of the year, or conversely, every other month. As you can see, reflected on this agreement, it shows that they limited to four times a year. That was one of the changes. I did sit down and speak to Ms. Garcia Asadia and advised her that that was contrary to what we had agreed. However, she did advise me that this was the way that the cap city approved their conditions regarding the brush pickup. What I will state to this court that if we cannot agree on this cooperation agreement, I would like at the minimum to perhaps maybe draft up a mutual aid agreement, which is different than a cooperation, interlocal cooperation, because the interlocal covers other usage of county equipment, assistance on roads, whereas a mutual aid agreement would assist in when there is a natural disaster, so that the county judge doesn't necessarily have to always issue out in emergency state of disaster, because when we do have a disaster, I have to go through TIDOM to get the approval, the Texas Department of Emergency Management as the Texas, as the emergency management director of Demet County, I have to go through them to get what's called the natural disaster number, and if it's not been approved by the state that it is a natural disaster, then we can't do it, and at that point, we can't obviously assist the city like we did this last time that I approved the natural disaster with the mutual aid agreement. At the minimum, that would allow in cases of natural disasters where we would assist the city of Curazo with picking up, not necessarily brush in particular, but debris that might have occurred due to that natural disaster, natural disaster, excuse me.
Judge, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Judge, if I'm mistaken, I was under the understanding that we were going to meet again and go over the interlocal agreement. I could be wrong, but I never agreed on working on a site to burn. That was one of my main discussions that was, I was against there for the simple fact that they want to do it on our landfill. When it's a city, when it's city brush, I don't see why we have to burn the brush in our county landfill, where they have plenty of space, where they can apply that license with TCEQ and do a burn site. Because in this case, not only is the county going to be responsible for that controlled burn, but I would not put any of my fire trucks or firefighters out there because in case of an emergency arises. So, and it's hard to put county employees to control that burn if they're not aware or have the training to control a fire. So, that was one of my disagreements that I had mentioned there at the meeting when we were having the interlocal discussion. So, at this time, again, I'm very much opposed on having a controlled burn site, because you never know what can happen.
And as I mentioned, I, along with you, were at that joint meeting, and at that meeting, we approved the minutes on our end, and at that meeting, I thought it was made very clear that what was discussed and what was agreed upon at that meeting, what was going to be reflected on the interlocal agreement, that needed to be drafted up by their attorney and then sent back to us so that we could review it. Obviously, as I mentioned, they clearly changed the terms of the agreement, because we did not agree to, in particular, I'll use the brush pickup, for example. Like I said, I did mention to Ms. Garcia when I met with her that that was not the agreement. Nonetheless, the city went ahead and that's how they approved it. My distinct understanding from speaking to Ms. Garcia, she advised me that there was one councilwoman there that said she did not hear the agreement that we had agreed to, so that's why she approved it the way she thought it was read out loud. When she realized that we had said six times brush pickup, that was not what she had agreed to, so then they went back to their city council meeting and changed the terms and the language of the agreement. I, as much as I would want to agree to the terms of these conditions, I think that there is still a lot of room for discussion, given the fact that things were changed. And as, as you mentioned, obviously, there is a concern in working on a burn site that has raised some concerns. Like I said, I would really want to entertain at the minimum a mutual aid agreement. If we can't agree on any of this, and we can draft up, obviously, I put it before Commissioner's Court before we approve anything, but at the minimum, a mutual aid plan and a mutual aid agreement, and that's solely for purposes of aiding one another during times of emergencies and/or natural disasters. It won't be applicable to, of course, the brush pickup, it won't be applicable to the equipment or services that we render to them for the daily operations of their business. The mutual agreement is solely for purposes of emergencies and natural disasters. I think at the end of the day, that's, at the minimum, that's the most important thing that we should focus on, is that if there is a natural disaster, an emergency, at the minimum, we have that mutual aid agreement so that we can assist our constituents, because the constituents are within each of our precincts, or your precincts. So, I think at the minimum, having a mutual aid. Obviously, brush pickup is within the city limits, it's a duty that they have, it's not something that the county is obligated to do, it's something that the county has assisted in doing. Obviously, you are well aware, Commissioner Caruana, that it was done a different way before, and now things are being changed. But brush pickup and the burn site is obviously something that's new in terms of, the terms of that, so, that's.
Judge, ma'am.
My position on that, yes, sir.
Judge, I'm extremely disappointed in the situation we're in at this point, based on the fact that for the past years, even before I was involved with Commissioner's Court, it wasn't a perfect process, it wasn't a perfect agreement in any shape or form, but it was something that was working for our constituents. We were able to assist at need it, and at times when the city could assist us, they would assist as well. At this point we're at, it just seems like we're running around in circles. Every time you change a word, and I don't know how they take it upon themselves to change what's something, something that was approved in a legal meeting, but like I said at that meeting, the people that are hurting are constituents, not too much about us anymore, or having it. I feel like, like Commissioner Caruana said, we need to have a meeting, everybody sit down, put it in black and white as plain as water, as plain as need, and this mutual agreement, it still has to be drafted, I'm sure.
Yes, that's what I said, I said at the minimum, we have to still draft the mutual aid agreement, and I have to bring it before Commissioner's Court to approve it, but not only do I have to approve it, there's a mutual aid agreement, so they would have to go before their council and have it approved as well. And you're absolutely correct. We, a year ago, I can sit here today and tell you, we did not have these issues. A year ago, we, a year and a half ago, two years ago, we were very much helping one another, and we didn't really have these issues. And I, for me, my position, and my position will remain, is that we made a decision at this joint meeting, and I'm sure you all are all aware how hard it was for us to even get that meeting put together, because we kept getting pushback or canceled, or we would attend their meeting, and we finally got this meeting in order. You guys are aware that I've put this on the agenda before, and no representative of the city has come before to discuss it with us either. So, I understand your disappointment and your concern, I very much share the same sentiments. Like I said, at the minimum, I can call Ms. Garcia again, and like I said, when I talked to her and I discussed this with her, I told her that I personally, as obviously the representative of this court, was not in agreement with some of the language, because that is not what we agreed on. And we had agreed on the language at that particular meeting. It was an open meeting, open to the public, it was a joint meeting, we posted the agenda, we agreed on the terms of the, of the language for the agreement, and lo and behold, it is a completely different document with completely different language, and it was approved by their council first before it was even sent to us, and it was sent to me at the same time it was sent to you guys, because you all got CC'd. So.
I'm sorry.
I mean, you all are aware, the ones that were at the meeting that day, what we agreed on, and there was, you know, some discussion, there was some back and forth until we came up with the number that the council and we agreed on, and I thought that's what we were going to be expecting when we received the agreement back, and obviously, there was changes. And I think everyone saw those changes, and I know that for the most part, most of you all have talked to me about your concerns that you all had from this agreement, I posed those to Ms. Garcia, she advised me that she was going to take it back to her council and her attorney to negotiate the terms, and these were still the same terms.
Judge, as far as right now, this ain't even a, I'm going to say, an agreement that we can come up with, because it's got the old mayor's name, so it's not valid as at this time. So, there is time to have another meeting and discussion to that, to cross the teeth. And I think that we should try and make another meeting, if they felt to do so, or for whatever reason, then we can just come up with a mutual aid.
I'll go ahead and contact Ms. Garcia this afternoon and ask her if we can find a date that everyone's available to have a joint meeting again.
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
On the changes, were you aware of any of the changes done to the agreement?
The brush pickup was one of them. The, on the back where it says that we'll work jointly with the city on a burn site, there was another one that you had advised me of, Commissioner, do you remember that one you told me about?
Yes.
That one wasn't there before?
That's what I was going to ask, because back in December 2023 and 2024, we agreed on the local agreement from the city that we have been approving every year, and it had been working wonderfully, the contract. I don't know what came about for them to change, because half of it's on the new contract, and they deleted from the previous one, to where we were working tremendously well together. The public needs to know that it's not us, because they see it as this, us, Commissioner's Court, that we don't want to help or assist the citizens of Curazo Springs, and it's not that way. We've been trying to work with them, because for the past five, seven years, we've been working wonderfully. As of this year, this is when it all changed. And it is not, not us, I mean.
One of the main things that changed when we went to that meeting, Commissioner, and I know that you weren't available that day, but one of the main things that, a lot of the things that did get deleted was because they wanted to charge us. They wanted to charge us for the tipping fees, and they wanted to charge us for when we had brush pickup and we're going to go drop off the brush outside of the times that they requested, they were going to charge additional, and, and they had it broken down to what precincts we're using it the most and what, excuse me, whatnot, and that was a negotiation discussion we had that day, that we said that we felt as the county that we shouldn't have to be paying for those when we were using our equipment and our men to assist them, because about, I'd say more than 75, 80% of what they were discussing was in regards to Precinct 1. And of course, Precinct 1 is within the city of Curazo, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, whatever. Yes, so his was the biggest one, so they were trying to use that as leverage to say, well, Commissioner Odena goes and takes the most, and Commissioner Odena caps out the rest of the commissioners when it comes to the tonnage. So, let's say for instance, that they have a cap of two tons a day, they were saying, well, Commissioner Odena uses that, so then the rest of the commissioners have to pay. Nonetheless, Commissioner Talamantes has Precinct 6, which is still within the city limits, Commissioner Alonso has within the city limits in Precinct 2, so those were things that were taken off from there, because they did want to charge. So, I agree, as I mentioned to you, I've been the judge with the old policy, the old interlocal agreement we had, and it worked fine, we never had any issues. We, there was never issue. Now, from my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, because you guys were there as well, the position that I understood it was that because they're running out of space, they're running out of space, so they're trying to minimize the brush pickup, and that's where it went into the language about every other month or six times a year, and then they went and changed it. And so, I want to say Commissioner Odena had discussed about, you know, us having, the county having a possible burn site within our landfill, but that would be applicable for us, so instead of like, let's say Commissioner, you, Commissioner Rulcava, that are outside Curazo limits, whatever you have from Asherton, you would go take it to our site as opposed to theirs, so that you wouldn't have to be paying tipping fees to them. And I guess that's where they got number four, which is to work jointly with the city on a burn site. But to be quite frank with you, at the end of the day, the county, the commissioners, you all, were not mandated to pick up brush pickup, we do it to assist them. And that was one thing that we had discussed at the meeting, because I felt, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, I kind of felt like our hands were being tied.
The way I feel is that they're not there for the constituents, because to me, it's more about money. This is all what it is, it's about money, about tipping fees, about who's going to pay, who's going to bring in the money, that's what it's about. I'm sorry, it's not about the space at the landfill, because that landfill is there to make them last a lot of years, because ours is for 10 years, 12 years. So, I'm sure that landfill has been built a long time ago, so it's for maybe 20, 25, 30 years. So, it's not about the space, I'm thinking, I'm just speaking for myself, I'm thinking the way I'm saying the thing, really nonetheless, it's about money. And I'm sorry to say they're not there for the constituents, because the ones suffering right now are your, all of us, our constituents are suffering, because we can't take in anything.
They actually said it there at the meeting, that they leave a landfill, when county comes in, they allow us so many tons, two tons of brush, and then once we hit that number, they stop us, but then the businesses that pay can come in, what difference of material, they can pay, we're not paying because we're using our equipment.
And that's why, that's why I'm saying, it's very pertinent, and that's why for me, I was saying, if we don't approve this, at the minimum, we do a mutual aid agreement, because you're completely right, Commissioner Rulcava, that at the end of the day, the only ones that are suffering from the lack of the county and the city having an agreement is the constituents, and I say that because, again, as the emergency management coordinator, and I work with Selena, who's my assistant emergency management coordinator, it's very hard, because as you all are aware, government laws, we're not allowed to just go and help other businesses, organizations, agencies, we have to have an interlocal agreement, and you guys are aware that the last time that we had the straight line winds, a lot of property was damaged in Asherton and in Curazo, Curazo Hill, and I had to very expeditiously and quickly sign an emergency order and work with TIDOM, because we weren't able to assist the city, and who suffers there? The city, the constituents. And Ms. Garcia, you know, made it clear to me, and I'm sure, you know, I know some of the commissioners text me and inquire like, hey, I don't want to get in trouble, Judge, like, can we go on the property if we don't have a MOU? And I said, no, but I'm working right now as fast as I can to get that emergency order, because I don't want you guys to get in trouble either for assisting. And at the end of the day, we're trying to assist, we're trying to help, we're trying to help the constituents, and that's what I'm saying, that we can't come to terms with this, because this is more on the, on the financial side, like you say, this agreement is more for purposes of, of helping, you know, to beautify the city in terms of brush pickup, and using the equipment, using the employees, that's what this agreement is for. Like I said, a mutual aid is totally different, that's to help in times of emergencies or disasters, but like I said.
Because I was going to say, remember at the meeting that she wasn't able to answer me, because I would say I completely 100% agree with Commissioner Rulcava on that, is that she wasn't able to answer us when we asked, is it a tonnage issue, or is it?
Money issue.
A money issue, because what they want us to do, and I think what they're still pretty set on doing, is only charging, not charging within the city limits, they still want us to pay our ticket fees for everything outside of the city limits, what do it include? Asherton, Baglo's and everything. And that is a part of the agreement that I'm not going to budge on, I don't think that it's fair for them to regulate or control how we're going to help or assist them, it's basically them telling us, you're going to help us pick up for the city, do everything for the city, and everybody in the county, you're still going to do it, but you're going to have to pay for them, you're just going to help us do our job over here. And I just don't think that that's right for the people that live outside the city limits. So, I think that the burn ban and everything and all, I do remember, and if I recall correctly, and if I recall correctly, Ms. Carmona, I do believe that we got up from that table with the motion that we were gonna sit back down and have to try to have another discussion because they weren't able to answer us if it was a money issue or if it was a tonnage issue. And then they were still kind of vamping, trying to charge us for everything within Asherton, Baguio's. Because I know that I went to a drop-off last week and the first question they asked was, where did you pick it up? Was it, and this was for brush pickup. This is when the storm's going on and we're trying to help and we're trying to assist people. And the first thing that they asked my guys was, well, where did you pick it up? And so it's like, does it really matter if I'm the Commissioner, where I'm picking it up or am I assisting prep? So.
Give me a second.
I do remember it being that they couldn't tell us. I do agree that it's a money issue. I would say honestly, at this point, I know that you want to do mutual aid. I would say to just remove it out of the contract. And we'll pick up for the county and take care of the county as we have been and let.
Remove what from the contract?
The brush pickup. Just not do brush pickup at all with the city of Carrizo. Allow them to pick up within the city limits.
If we approve the agreement with making changes to it and remove the brush pickup, it's still going to not be an enforceable contract because they have their language and we have our language. We have to, we have to meet again.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
They were quick to put it on the paper. And if we'd been saying time after time, that they had passed the inter-local agreement, they were quick to put it out there. And basically said now the counties, you know, but I see it as, we've always been saying, put it on the paper. I feel that, Judge, if you want to address a letter or somebody, address a letter to the citizens of Carrizo Springs, that it's not the county that's not willing to work with us. We had our language on that on that inter-local agreement, but for some reason, it was changed.
I have a question.
And then, and what I see, and what I see is, they were quick to put it out there. And they left us now looking at us like a bad guy that don't want to help our constituents. But their language is wrong. And and how do we communicate with our constituents without letting them know? Not everybody has social media, not everybody has YouTube, not everybody has Instagram. But if we put it on the newspaper, then we can address this issue and try and make a a letter saying, or a statement saying, we're willing to meet with the city again to clarify some of the issues that are around here and that we're not rebelling against our citizens or the city. We are trying to work with them.
I'll go ahead and and do that, Commissioner. I'll draft up a letter. And and once I have it drafted, I will email it to you all so that you can see it before I submit it to the local newspaper and inform our constituents of what's going on to those that don't have social media or get on YouTube. I'll go ahead and do draft that letter.
Do we have, we're not allowed to put our county equipment on city limits? Because remember, we spoke last week and I think you had told me that you advised me that I was able to, but I don't think that.
Not on private.
Not on private property, but you can put it on on a public road or county property. I mean, because he's within the city limits and he has equipment on precinct two. So long as it's not on private property.
But you can like help assist them as long as it's like in a roadway, like in public spaces.
Oh, yeah, public spaces, yeah. You just can't go into private property.
Is that all?
Second.
Motion to table. With a proposal to schedule a joint meeting as soon as possible with the city and the county.
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Udena, second by Commissioner Rulkava. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three point seven, I have a motion to table. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rulkava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point eight, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report. I have a motion to table. Second by Commissioner Rulkava. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point nine, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from rodeo arena event coordinator, Ms. Jasmine Boone, for the month of May 2025. Excuse me.
Good morning.
Good morning. Are there questions on this, Boone?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Rulkava.
Second.
Who's second? Who's second? I'm sorry.
I didn't hear.
Commissioner Talamates. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Boone. Three point one zero, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Dimon County Golf Course for the month of May 2025.
Good morning.
Morning.
Any questions of Mrs. Hyman? Have a motion by Commissioner Rulkava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rulkava. Any other discussion?
Another question. I don't know how it did.
Question or discussion?
How did that tournament turn out?
Saturday's tournament? It was phenomenal. We brought in over thirty-four hundred dollars just that Saturday alone.
Great. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one, discussion and appropriate action, approval for three sixty-fifth, Melissa Garcia, to attend the eighty-eight National Council of Juvenile Family Court Judges Conference on July twenty through twenty-third in Chicago, Illinois.
No.
Mr. Castaneda, the mic's down.
You hear me now?
Judge, may I entertain this item?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. On this item, on the last time that it was discussed that it wasn't approved. After the meeting or so while it ended, the statement was made that nobody had gone out of state for some training. And that was the purpose that it was turned down. However, we had three, three of our elected officials go out of state when they went to Washington, DC, and we approved it. So, and this has to do with Juvenile and Family Court. So I asked Ms. Garcia to go ahead and put it back on the agenda and see what the reply of the court would be. Either we approve it or not on the basis that nobody had gone out of state or is there a certain reason why we're not gonna approve it?
Real quick, Commissioner Alonso Carmona, I want to make it very clear to you and clarify it because I I think that your statement that you just made is a blanket statement as regards to the reason why it was not approved. I think there was three individuals on this court that voted against, and each of the individuals had a different reason as to why they didn't approve it. The statement you're making was not a statement that was made by everyone as to why it was not approved. You are completely and utterly correct that there was three elected officials that went to a training in Washington, DC. That is without saying. There's no cover-up. There's no hiding. There's no ulterior motives. There's no agenda. It's very transparent. It was put on YouTube. I'm sure everybody sees it. And everyone knows that three elected officials went to Washington, DC as well. If I'm not mistaken, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Rulkava, advised that she was not approving because she's never approved any out-of-state travel. Commissioner Talamates, again, correct me if I'm wrong, mentioned that she do not approve because she had questions and wanted to inquire further as to Judge Abascal and had not had any discussion with him. And that was her position. My position was because when I asked for flight travel, not to go out of state, but flights, it was denied by this court because it was said, and I think you in particular, if I go back to the minutes, that said that we don't, or we've never approved for any elected official to fly. And so what I said was, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And what I was saying is that if you're going to deny my flight travel as a Dimon County employee, how can I sit here and not sound hypocritical and approve somebody else's flight travel? That's what I said.
Judge, I never said that I was against. My question was, does the county allow, allow flight travel? Never did I say, and this is under oath, ma'am.
But you still didn't approve it.
We can start it back and forth, and we're not gonna get anywhere. But my question was, is the county allowed to fly? Never did I say if you were, you were not allowed because. If if I would have said that you weren't allowed to fly, I would have voted against the Washington, DC travel.
I understand that.
As a matter of fact, I even congratulate you.
You did.
I'm going. Never did I win against you and saying that.
But I'm not going against you, Commissioner, about flying.
The way you're making it sound that I didn't want to approve the flight, that is not correct.
You didn't approve my flight to LaBuk.
Well, no.
It didn't get approved.
It wasn't only me, ma'am.
No, I know. I understand.
Take it as if it was only me.
No, I'm not. After all, I didn't. Well, because I had three votes.
Well, LaBuk, Chicago, two very.
I was a little confused because I was like, your flight didn't get approved. Yeah, like, say that again.
LaBuk, Chicago, or LaBuk and Washington are two very different places. I can drive to LaBuk without a problem. Somebody doesn't, that's their problem. But to drive to Chicago, to drive to to Washington is too different. We gotta keep in mind what we're talking about before everybody gets into the detail of this.
But that's why I just wanted it to be brought back, that we do allow flights. And she's going for a training that required. And that is mine. Within our secretaries, or your secretaries, training, sorry. I don't see.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jose Udena, and a second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
I I did want to touch base again with you. The reason that I did, and I did, I did deny your travel, was because, and I'm still waiting to speak to Judge Abascal, is that you work directly under him, so he makes sure to take care of you. But we have a whole department and a whole office that also works with him, and they're falling through the cracks and they're not getting services. They're not getting help. Nobody's meeting in the middle to make sure that that office is being taken care of.
If I may, what office are you referring to?
Marisana.
District clerk.
District clerk. Okay, I wasn't aware that there was any.
She has a long list of issues. You know, one of the big things is that where court is being held, it's not to her benefit for her employees. Yes, for her employees, for her safety, for everything. And at one point, I feel that we do need to have a discussion with Judge Abascal to try to meet in the middle to make sure that we're taking care of all of our employees, not just his and people that work directly with him, but also the people that work within the county and that represent this county.
I agree with you, Commissioner, on that. And I do have communication with Marisana. Unfortunately, Judge cannot be here today. He's holding a court in Maverick County. So I had someone cover me so I can come over to this meeting. He could not be here due to that reason.
And that was just the main thing. It was nothing personal or anything like that. I mean, I I didn't honestly expect it to come down to me to approve or not approve it. I'm not gonna be hypocritical because I was one that went to Washington and I did benefit and learn a lot. And I do know that a lot of times when you travel out of state, you're getting knowledge firsthand. When it comes down to Texas, it's kind of the second hand at that point by the time it comes down to us. So I do see the benefit of you going out of state for this training, getting this, you know, this workshop done. I just think that he, at some point, he needs to come and address this court so we can have a conversation and communicate and work out something that works best for all of us.
I did mention that to him, and he said he he wouldn't try to be here at the next meeting. But unfortunately, meetings do follow when he has court. It's a full non-jury docket, CPS, family cases. He couldn't come.
And he can always, yeah, he can always call us as well or we need to schedule a special meeting. If, I know it's not an emergency meeting, but even a special meeting. Because like I'm telling you, I know that that office has been asking for help and assistance and for court to be held on the third floor. And, you know, we've gone along and back and forth, but there's never been a conversation since I've been here. And that's where I was going at that, that I I do wish and hope, and I would greatly appreciate if he decides to make the time to come to the next Commissioners' Court because the same way that we're gonna take care of you to make sure that you go this training so you can serve and help serve Dimon County, I want to make sure that we give that same courtesy to our employees here in Dimon County. So I will approve the travel on on that, so.
Thank you. I think we've had this discussion before, Ms. Garcia, regarding conducting court here in the third floor. And I know that you, as the coordinator, are are or were all for having it here on the third floor, but your hands are tied and we understand that you have a boss. And so you have to do what your boss says. And so I know you and I have had those discussions before about trying to make court conducive to our employees because our goal is to take care of our employees. That being said, Mrs. Gonzalez at her office, and we have had conversations ad nauseam here with her regarding the logistics of having court at the courthouse south, so.
Yes, it's not ideal for us either. I don't know if you guys have visited, but no, Commissioner Carmona has made it a little more bearable for us, and we appreciate that. But like I said, you know, our hands are tied. Our courtroom is signed as a historical courthouse. We can't use it for now until the elevator's fixed. So currently, we're using the south courthouse and we're making the best that we can with it. But I will convey to the judge that you would like to speak with him regarding, you know, possibly coming to some mutual agreement meeting halfway on offer.
That's all I'm looking for. I just want to move that a little bit to.
I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have an opposition by Commissioner Rulkava. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Judge.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Three point one two, discussion and appropriate action, approval for Dimon County Judge Matapongo to attend the probate academy and judges' education advisory committee meetings on July ninth through eleventh in Austin, Texas.
So who?
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have to attend this one?
Yes, I do.
I have a question for you. What are we gonna do? Because I'm not sure, or you can just go ahead and stop me. Do we have a budget amendment on this Commissioners' agenda?
We are getting one, I think, from Mr. Varela for the next agenda. He was gonna give me.
No, this one is until July, so we have another Commissioners' Court coming up.
We have one at the end of the month.
Yes.
Not a budget amendment.
Because we're gonna approve another, we're gonna approve another travel for the same budget that I think every one of us that I've asked knows that we're gonna need a budget adjustment on.
Yes, sir. So I need it for my hours.
But like, if she needs to go, I understand that. I just had that question. But since we have another Commissioners' Court coming up, I can wait until it's put on the next Commissioners' Court because the train's out till July. Um because we're about to approve a, a tra- a travel, and we know, we all know that we need a budget adjustment. So I was asking if the budget adjustment was on this Commissioner's Court, and she said no, but we still have another Commissioner's Court before she goes in July.
Oh, yeah, there'll be money in there, is what, what you're asking.
Are you saying there's no money in the budget?
There is no money in the budget. There, Mr. Bereda.
It's the same as we mean budget, a technical priority.
Yes.
If, and I know that this is education, but if we don't money out of other departments, we more money to go there.
And.
And then it can be asked questions later on.
And just for the record, Commissioners, I'm just requesting for meal and mileage because TAC is paying for everything else. They're paying for my registration because I do sit on the judicial committee. Uh TAC is paying for my hotel room, TAC is paying for my um registration fee, so the county's only paying for my meal and my, my luggage. That's all I'm asking for. Second. Second, by Commissioner Delamontes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one three, discussion and appropriate action, sports complex project update report.
Long time, I've been waiting for you.
Thank you, sir.
What's the status on the sports complex?
It's, it's still on schedule.
What is the schedule to be commissioned?
Did we get a discount on the, on the dirt that we held in?
Discount dirt?
Yeah, did we ever get credited back?
Credited.
I think that, that's what they're working on right now.
How, how do we keep up, how many, uh not, did you keep up with how many loads that were delivered there?
Yes, actually, the architect is working on, on, on the math of the number of loads and how much we will be credited back.
Where did you put the, the, for the, the utility poles, for the lights, where did you put the boxes?
Uh it's, it's, it's in the, it's gonna be, the transformer's already installed, it's gonna be in the back of the arena.
Okay, but like the, the, like the outlet connector.
Oh, no, 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 it's, it's just the, the, the main power lines. So, so there's, there's power in the property, but it's, it's the main, the main power lines.
So all the buildings and everything should be up by November?
Yes, I think punch, punch list is uh November twenty eighth, which is the little details, pain, touch-ups.
November twenty eighth or October twenty eighth?
I think we're the punch list.
I was gonna say, because last time they told me October.
Oh, October is, is like the finalized, but punch list is like, it's when everything's turned to you.
When, when you're gonna turn it over?
Yes.
When in?
November twenty eighth.
November twenty eighth.
Is the architect gentleman beat there frequently or?
Architect, yes.
Okay, then, I mean, architects. I say it because on our previous projects, the.
No, and I, actually, we have the, the engineers also frequently, like once a week they go there, and architect. And usually I'm with, I'm with them and they make things.
Did you ever figure out the water issue, the water pressure issue?
It's, it's, the city's working on it already.
The city's working on it already? What was the issue with the water pressure?
The city is saying that the golf torch is eating up all the water. That's their position. But really, if you look at it, it's way bigger than that, is what we ended up finding out, right, Commissioner Urenda?
Yeah, it's all, it's all the city.
Mm-hmm.
So, so the golf course has been there since nineteen sixty-eight, and all of a sudden the golf course is originally no pressure.
Well, they have boosters on those pumps and maybe those tanks that the city pulls up water.
So what did you discover?
Because when the, when the pressure's low, they turn on the.
So what did you discover?
We, we, we discovered that the city has a problem that it hasn't been able to deal with in years. And that's how far we can go because we can't get a lock with the city. Our issue is, they don't, they're the provider of the water, and they don't have enough um.
Pressure.
Pressure. And it's not so much that. If you drive, if you drive around the green streets for one day, your product count fifty to sixty leaks, that's where you reach.
I got one down my roof that's growing a tree.
And I'm serious. Is it a peach tree or a?
It's an orange tree.
It's a tree that you see.
How are we as far as budget?
Budget, that would be some new forms, for here. And I'll deal with the other parts.
Okay, so just the construction phase of it? So he keeps track of the project?
The project, like.
The funds, what we're spending it on, who has that?
Not I, you can.
How are we, are we on track?
Yes, ma'am.
I hear you're using one of the county plots to come out of Eagle Pass every day. Are we giving you a few?
Yes.
Not you in particular, though, right? You have a credit card?
Yes.
Okay.
The truck, with the truck.
The truck, the, the truck.
Yeah, the car's seen the truck.
We have all the turf already purchased for the fields, for everything?
The what?
All the turf.
Yes.
Where's it at?
The turf, then, the company has it stored in the warehouse.
So we just have it.
It's considered material on hand. And that could be if it's purchased, if not the territory, it's not about thirty percent.
I still had an objection, though, to turfing the whole, the whole sports complex. I don't think that was necessary, I think that if we would have had a discussion prior, we would have came up with a better solution and probably saved a lot of money.
It's gonna get turf.
It's also gonna be hot.
So they're working on, the construction crew is currently working on the foundations for the bedding cages and dugouts with concrete pours planned for this week.
Yes, they're planning on Wednesday and Thursday, but there's a scheduled forecast for rain, so that's what they're, they're thinking right now. It might be pushed to next week.
Yeah, we're having issues with laminations of the rain.
It's Wednesday and Thursday rain.
Really?
Wednesday, Thursday.
We're having issues with all this rain.
Cause it backs up.
Yeah.
Judge, I had a question for you. Do, are you going to consider changing the, the name of the complex?
To what?
I think we had a discussion one time, and we had said that instead of naming it the sports complex, uh boys and girls center or something, just because you're gonna offer more than just sports.
No, the, the, well, the sport, we named, we termed it Demet County Sports Complex uh when we approved the, the project, but um the only consideration that I thought about changing it was to like a recreational center because it's not necessarily just a sports complex. I mean, obviously, the meat and potatoes of the complex is um associated with sports because of all the sport activity, but it's not, I mean, it also has um, uh it's gonna have a splash pad, it's gonna have a playground, so it's not just a sports complex, um but.
I think that was the name that you had thrown out, your county recreation.
Recreation Center.
Yeah, just because I do have a lot of people sometimes as well that get confused where we say sports complex and they think it's only.
No, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a complex um that is um to be utilized by everybody and anyone that, regardless of a sport. We did Demet County Sports Complex because at the time when we were doing the walkthrough and approving the project, uh project, um we, as I mentioned again, we, we were marrying a lot, the Eagle Pass Sports Complex, and their Eagle, their, a sports complex was the City of Eagle Pass Sports Complex. Um and so that's why um we did that, but um that's also that there's room for discussion for that, it's not like there has to be one specific name, that was just the name that was approved by Commissioners' Court back in twenty twenty-three.
What percentage of the project is being completed?
Right now, I'd say about fifty percent.
Fifty?
The main, the, the hardest, the hardest thing about the project is the buildings that are going up right now, and the rest is just gonna be.
Cause the rest is just crap, yeah, it's just land. There's only three actual buildings that are gonna be done, which are the two concession stands and then the one gym. The rest, um, I, I mean, if you pass by there, it looks like there's nothing, but really, as soon as they're done with that last building, they just need a throwdown for the, for the turf, because everything is just really ground. I mean, there's an outdoor basketball, everything's ground, there's nothing really.
So all the concrete is poured already?
Uh except for the, the dugouts, bedding cages, and where the beach were already.
Bedding cages, beaches.
Sidewalks.
The restaurants and the, the ICF walls.
The ICF walls, that's the insulated concrete form, so, so those are, those forms are like, it's like a styrofoam, but it comes already prefaced, it's like a, like Legos. In the middle, it's a seven-inch gap, so they pour concrete in there.
That's the wall, sir?
That's the way, okay, with Legos.
That's the way this courthouse. With, with Legos.
So it gives a R value of like R sixty for insulation.
So fifty percent has been completed. And we have paid eleven point six million.
Eleven point six million? And we paid that with the.
Tax notice.
I know the tax notice was thirteen million, I'm not sure where the rest of it.
No, we had fifteen five, Commissioner Ullacava, on tax note.
On the paperwork, it says thirteen million.
Mm-mm, I don't know what Mr. Bereda did, but we had approved in Commissioners' Court fifteen five. That's what we had approved.
Is it thirteen or fifteen, Mr. Bereda?
It was thirteen, fifteen.
But we approved fifteen. That's what we, that's what I had, remember?
Tax note's thirteen fifty. Well, regardless, whether it, what was, what is or what isn't, the tax note is saying thirteen, it's on paper.
No, I understand what you're saying, but Commissioner Alonso and I, Urenda, all agreed that it was fifteen five when we approved it.
It was probably with fifteen, and so part of it was budgeted from the budgets, and so that's how we're coming up with the amounts.
Do you mind if I said it?
I'm gonna go look at my papers, because that's what we approved, Judge, Commissioner, we had approved fifteen five.
I'd be useful, Judge.
That's what I remember.
Better, I'm not as soon.
How long does that take, how long ago was that, Friday?
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that, fifteen five. That's what I remember.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we said it was fifteen five, thirteen's in there. Other questions?
Thank you.
Train a motion?
Subpo.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Who seconded?
I did. Second by Commissioner Delamontes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries three point one four, discussion appropriate, thank you, sir. Discussion and appropriate action, approval of construction of brush pit located next to landfill freezing one.
Judge, this item is on the agenda for the sole purpose of trying to provide a location for us, Commissioners, and you, when you, uh, to have a place to stop off some of the brush. Because uh as we are at this point, if we pick up brush, I do have areas out of city limits that sometimes call or sometimes have brush. That either there's storm knocked over, whatever it may be, but at that point, I'd have to ask for tip and fees, and I'm trying to eliminate from having to spend money on, on brush uh delivery if, if we have a, if we could set up a place to stop off brush, those people. And then eventually, either mulch it or, uh, I know Commissioner Carmona is opposed to burning, but it then may be a consideration, maybe so. I, I don't think we should even talk about burning now, we don't even have a pit, but.
So you're asking to um construct a brush pit next to the landfill?
Yes, uh in the same, in the same hundred and eighty, uh hundred and twenty acres where the landfill situated, so there's sixty-three acres that are permitted under TCU for the landfill specifically. The rest of the property are not permitted, therefore it allows the county to utilize as need.
In a sense, it, it allows for you to be able to use that brush, use it as a brush pit?
If, if, if approved, if, if, if we agree on it, yes, we could uh use one of the back roads, and I believe there's already even some open pits because previously that property was used to remove material to build roads. So there's already holes in the very back that were left there where they were excavating the gravel.
It's the eighty acres, Judge, that's left from the hundred.
Eighty.
And then the hundred are used for the landfill. That's the empty property, not for the pit is that?
Behind it.
For the pit. And they can't do it close to the pit.
Right, so the fenced area is, the fenced area is what determined it, right, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Then, uh, Judge on that, we, we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We still need to run it by TCU, uh, for, then come and look at that. If it don't.
So are you asking to table it, or you're, what are you asking?
No, 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 it comes with the process. Once, once you ask.
We would definitely, well, I, I spoke to TCU in regards to the brush itself. Is it, and the reason I called it because how the city's saying, he can only breathe when he comes, but the reason they're running, running out of time is considering brush uh garbage, and our brush is in reality not considered garbage. I have the uh, the document that was sent from TCU is considered yard uh, heavy.
And the, right, Commissioner, um, the reason why TC gets, TCU gets involved is because they wanna make sure there's no, no water pellet you're throwing in there for, or anything that has, has the slides. Because, yeah, like you see on our, on our burn, on our burn permit, it says anything that's treated with test slide, you cannot burn. And that's why TC, I'm sorry, that's why TCQ gets involved.
I, I was gonna, if, if we, if we do come up with a solution, maybe speak to Commissioners or Dallas where her personnel can actually inspect our people coming in and make sure they don't have anything other than brush, make sure there's no tires, no, no.
I have a question, after we take the brush, who's in a mulcher?
We, we'd have to either bring in the mulcher that person one has, or uh, or we may not.
Because I asked to buy one, and Mr. Bereda said there's no funding.
Well, maybe they bought it, we can fund for it.
But uh, the top grinder that we needed, seven hundred thousand dollars.
You have a mulcher, Commissioner?
Yeah, my, my tractor does the most.
Your what?
My tractor does the most.
I know Commissioner Delamontes took in brush, and she mulched it, but just one truck it missed up her, her.
Oh, yeah, because those mulchers are, they're gonna live it up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they're small, so that's what I'm saying. And the, the, that we really need there to mulch, because I've seen what we carry, and by the number that the city said that you guys or us as Commissioners Court we take in, we need a huge top grinder.
And I'm gonna tell you honestly, Commissioner, at some point or another, even with a large mulcher, we'll have to burn because the trees that fell on south side, uh, on the south side building.
They're too big.
They were huge, the, there's no grinder that can really.
Mulch them, because I was, I was about to ask, I'm a little confused.
But maybe it'll be good because by then the city will do theirs, and we will do the try.
But I think this would also set us up to where we're not leaning and waiting on the city to give us permission.
Because our constituents still are having to wait because we don't have an agreement with the city, so our constituents are suffering too because we don't have a place to take it. We've been mulching it, but it takes. We've been mulching it, but it takes up a lot of time.
So we're...
Well, I'm glad that you're, because I know you had talked to me about the mulcher. And I do wanna say that I wanna thank you for being financially conservative because I know you told me it was like seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is a lot of money, right? So I know that you said you're gonna wait a little bit on it to see what we decide with the city. So on the, on the financial side, I just wanna thank you for being financially conservative about it because it is a lot of money. And I know that at some point, it's gonna be needed. But even at that, like, right now, when you take it to the city, you don't mulch it. You just take it like that.
Just leave it like...
Yeah.
Does they have...
And we can't do that at ours.
Does they rush their grinder?
We can't do that at ours, or if we were to make a pit.
What's happening in that, that's the issue is that we could do it at ours, but then we would have to classify it as garbage and we stop garbage. So then we would have to pay T C Q for that before upstalking that brush rather than us burning it or mulching it and we don't have to pay anybody.
And why can't we burn it, you said?
Well, I mean, burning is obviously a concern because, one, we know how hot and dry it gets during the... If we were to decide, okay, we're gonna burn. And I always say this, if we were considered burning, my idea was to take Commissioner Camona's experience and let him kind of design a good day to burn. If we have a stock show...
He's like a toaster.
If we have a stock show, and if we have a brush cock and it's wet, and we have a day where they're doing a drizzling, we've gone through it before. And if he says, you know what, Commissioner, today would be a good day, let's set it up. You know, I know he doesn't wanna tie it to his fire trucks. We can use our water trucks. And I'm sure we can train some of our guys enough to where we can use companies to take care of a brush cock. Plus, we were cleared enough area to where we don't have any obstacles within a hundred feet or whatever he decides he'd be safe. But going back to the mulcher, even if you mulch a stock show, you still have to get rid of that stock pile. What are you gonna do with the mulcher if it gets so high? Very good.
Look, but it's less, it's less brush. Mulches, if you have, say, twenty trees, you'll get, let's just say, you bury it, and it still gives you more room than making a big pit and be burying those trees.
Because my thing is that if we do do the pit, what are we doing the pit for? Are we gonna do it to mulch it or are we gonna do it to burn it? Because Mr. Camona's saying no to burn at all. And if we go in there, my whole thing is that still as, and I think they went over this, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, but we're not allowed to pile brush.
Correct. What, in our yard or not?
In our yard or not?
I thought anywhere.
No, no.
No, you can.
The landfill.
You can.
And the landfill.
You just can't in your yard.
In our yard.
And just remember, sometimes when they have a dump, it's kind of a... So...
Mr. Nama, I know this will take a, it's a process. It'll take a while. The pit that's at your yard, for now, if we mulch, can we take it in there? But, or it's too small?
I mean, it's pretty small, but we can, we can use it.
We can.
We've been mulching.
Our mulchers aren't gonna get us or we can take it.
Well, we've been using mulch here.
Yeah, that's what we've been...
I mean, we've been using it too, but like, it'll take a toll, yes.
But for now, because this is gonna take a while before we do construct the pit and all that. But for the meantime, and like I said, if it's mulch, we can take it to the landfill. But I know the, I'm not for the burning either.
And if, and if the thing is, we end up with a bunch of small stuff. Like even the other day, we picked up a bunch of banana trees. That stuff actually would dry up. Just leave it. Let it sit there. But we have to get rid of it, you know?
We need to make sure, because nowadays, my drivers for the sanitation trucks, Judge, on the dumpsters, they're putting mattresses and stuff that does not go in there. And we don't realize that until we pick it up and we take it. And it's like, man. So I've been telling them from now on, whoever, I mean, we can't go because we don't know when. But I said, if you see anything other than trapped household trash, we're not picking anything up. So if people are calling your office complaining that we're not picking up their trash, it's because we can't. Because they're throwing toilets, they're throwing refrigerators, smaller refrigerators, mattresses inside the dumpsters, we cannot take them. Not even construction. So I'm telling the guys, just leave it there. We're not gonna pick up.
My question is, if we, saying we designate this, this location as the brush pit location, how is that gonna translate or transition if we get the mulcher for the landfill?
It's gonna be a lot easier for the landfill because they can start mulching it.
So we will still have access? So then we could...
Keep in mind, if we use the pit, it will be like the city by tonnage. Maybe Wednesdays and Fridays, because we only have one track route that'll be designated because we have to stay by the tonnage also.
So then can we motion to approve the location, but pause on the, like, opening?
You can. Or you can open it and...
Yeah, or like from us going and jumping in. Like approve the location that that's where we're gonna hold the brush, whether we bury it or we go pile it there, because it will help us. But pause us going and jumping in there because we don't know. We're not gonna burn. You said no burning.
Maybe you can't take the brush yet.
Yeah, so we would have to come on. Just approve the location.
We table and have the two Commissioners go over the plans over there, that Commissioner Alomar and... Well, yeah, that stipulation, Jack, where we don't buy late...
Commissioner Nada, this is your idea?
Yeah, I'm just asking for...
I just want, I wanted to bring it up so we could have a discussion. Come up with a...
What I'm asking is, we tabled it and let you and Commissioner Alomar, without any other us getting involved, where we don't buy late.
Sure. We can do that. I mean...
Without constituting a court.
And I wanted to just motion to approve the location, but hold off to end up...
Well, we can, we can, we can table it for now. Commissioner Alomar and I can go out there and figure out what would work better. And then open back on the agenda for the next Commissioners Court.
Second to table. Who motion to table?
Uh, Alonso.
You motion to table?
Yes.
Motion to table by Commissioner Camona. Second by Commissioner Delamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one five, discussion and appropriate action. Approval to refund fifty percent discount to designated party for double booking on January seventeen, twenty twenty-six.
Working?
I don't know.
Oh, there it is. I can't hear you over here.
I'm trying to be quiet, but I request that this item to be placed on the agenda of what happened in this situation. We double booked a weekend of January. And it involved Ms. Tams and her family and livestock association. So with that said, I spoke to Ms. Tams and basically went over the options that we had. And Ms. Tams visited where her family, and they were able to move the date. Is that correct, Ms. Tams?
When we discussed, you let me know that I wasn't gonna have access to the ballroom until that day after lunch. So that was gonna bring an issue to us, and I don't have an option but to...
Okay, let me, let me, let's start from the beginning. What I told Ms. Tams, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we had three options. One, we would work around each other. We'd still have to have the stock show on that weekend because it's been held on the second weekend of January for the past whatever years. I don't even know the exact number. And the other option was to, if she could, move the date of her, whatever it was...
So whenever she booked, the stock show wasn't booked, or what happened?
It wasn't booked because she booked it from January when we were still having the stock show of last year. So Jasmine booked it, not realizing that that was a weekend that the stock show sell. So it, it, you know, it was double booked. It happened. We're here now. So we're here to come up with a solution.
Yes.
I don't...
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Ms. Tams.
May I finish?
Yes.
I thought, I thought I was just speaking.
Go ahead. You're still speaking.
Okay. So the other option was to move the, move the date or work around us, around each other, which we were gonna, the association uses it Thursday, Friday, Saturday is the sale. The sale goes on till like five or six, however that takes place in the rodeo arena. The venue, the venue would be unbothered and she could use it. But it's still the traffic because of the construction. We all know how it is. It's still gonna be an issue. At that point, Ms. Tams told me, I will talk to my daughter and see if we can move it. So she calls me back and says, Commissioner, my daughter said we can move it. However, she wants to know if there's any type of discount. And I told her, from my standpoint, I would be willing to give her a discount, but I'd have to bring it up to Commissioners Court and get their opinion on it. So that's where the conversation ended.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Go ahead, Commissioner Delamontes.
My question to you is, were you seeking out the fifty percent discount? And were you okay with, I wanted to hear it from your point of view because I understand what he's coming up from his... I wanna understand it from your point of view.
Yes, well, what I understood was that I wasn't gonna have access to the ballroom until that Saturday and the event after lunch.
Can you speak to the mic?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
No, I can't.
Okay. So what I was told was that I wasn't gonna have access to the ballroom until after lunch that Saturday, which wasn't gonna give us enough time to decorate, set up everything for that event. So with that in mind, I said, well, there's gonna be issues already to begin with. So we're trying to avoid any issues or anything like that. I said, well, I mean, I'll talk to my daughter, see if she's willing to move everything. But then we have to look for the band, for the photographer, to... Decorate, everything to change the date. So that's where we're coming from, you know? So I said, well, we don't have, basically, I don't have a choice. We scheduled this event. We got into a contract in January seventeen. It's paid for. And we were told that we basically have to change the date.
So you already paid for the event?
Yes, it's paid for, for the arena.
Okay, the time.
Yes.
So it's not your fault?
Correct. It wasn't, the other event was not booked when I booked this event. So we went ahead and we went ahead with our plans, you know? So but when we were told that we weren't gonna have access to the ballroom till that same Saturday, it's not gonna give us enough time to prepare for everything. We can't share the event with another event. So that's why I'm coming forward and asking, well, if we do have an option, I don't know if we have an option, to keep the same date and keep the same contract as we initially had signed.
The way I see it, it's you do have a choice. Either you keep your event that day or unless you wanna move it.
But if she keeps, but if she keeps the event that day, what she's saying is how she can make great for the wedding because of contract.
No, I understand this.
The contract says she can have it from twelve?
Well, what I'm trying to say is, we always said, whoever reserves that, it's first come, first served. So if the stock show came later, it's, I'm trying to make it sound, I think you have the rest, the stop. Maybe they can move the stop show. I mean, hold on. They can move the stop show because in all fairness, you already made all your plans. It's not for, for anyone to inconvenience you. When you pay for it, you have a contract. Now we can't go back on that contract. Like you said, you already made all your arrangements. Now it's a lot harder to get everything reorganized.
May I ask, what's the event?
It's a wedding.
And I'm only saying that because I know how expensive it is and how far ahead you have to book for photographers and change. And the photographers are gonna turn to you as well. Cake.
So you booked it a year in advance, you're saying?
And it's a wedding?
Yes.
She booked it the weekend of the stock show. The stock show has an active contract, just so y'all know. The livestock association has an active contract, do they not? So the livestock association has an active contract because of her contract, too, please.
But is the contract signed on the stock?
Yes.
Is it in advance, or is it just backward amount?
The contract is signed for twenty twenty-five, so twenty twenty-six was not inactive. Like, it's not signed currently.
The contract for this?
Twenty twenty-six, which is the day of her wedding.
Which, when does that, the contract expire?
In June, this month. So they have until then.
But, but still, the con, there's no contract till twenty twenty-six, right?
No, no.
So actually, I believe in all fairness, she should keep her event.
Okay. You can keep it on that day and we'll work around each other, the way, the way I told you.
No, but she can.
She just needs to know, that's right. And the luncheon?
It's a wedding, Commissioner. They can decorate what the day before.
Right, the night before. It's just dead stress. Like, you can't, you can't, oh, I'm sorry.
Guys, let me, let me explain something to everybody in this court because y'all don't know. Y'all can do whatever you want and we need to pay attention to what's going on. I just held a quinceañera there not too long ago. We had a freeze or a storm coming in during that time. We knew that there was a possibility the building might be used for something besides the quinceañera. This building was not built like the Royal Palace or the Pan American where it's a family business, we have to generate money on a week-to-week basis. It's optional and it's out there for people to utilize as needed. If it's not used, this building, if you go back in history, it was built for the youth, for the livestock association primarily. And correct me if I'm wrong, because I wasn't here when they were built.
It was built for public use?
It was built for the name that found it. Dimic County Youth Rodeo, Dimic County Rodeo Arena and Stock Show. But look, if y'all wanna change it, y'all can, y'all can do whatever y'all want. I gave, I told you what the options were. We're gonna have the stock show that we can because we can't move it. This livestock association brought in half a million dollars for kids, for kids. And if they can't move it, because that's the, the following weekend is Eagle Pass, so we can be for it. It's Crystal Cities.
Commissioner, but you don't seem to grasp what they're trying to tell you.
No, y'all...
The contract ended in June of this year.
Okay, fine. Then we'll have it on that weekend. We'll have it on that weekend.
You don't have a contract for that weekend.
The contract just ended in Jan.
In June, right? So it's not for Jan, for January twenty-six. The contract, the contract just ended. Y'all haven't signed a new contract.
Okay, y'all vote however you want, and I will let the association know that they're not gonna be able to have their stock show there this year. That's fine. I'm not, y'all go.
You're making...
No.
From a table of...
No, you're not understanding the details of the facts on this. There are solutions. Y'all don't wanna see the solutions because of a contract. She, she, she scheduled, listen, she scheduled it January seventeenth while we were having the stock show, while all these kids were there. How do you know when the stock show's gonna be at that time?
You just said every second week.
Well, there you go then.
But you yourself are contemplating yourself.
I know. I knew, but I don't want to schedule it, Commissioner.
Well, then you should be on the ball and...
We can have the same weekend.
You're involved.
We have the same weekend. We have the same weekend.
Have it the same weekend.
Why not?
That's not benefiting to her. That's a way.
What does the contract say, John? What time is she allowed to go back in?
Commissioner Nada.
What, what time, what does the contract say?
Commissioner Nada. I understand we're coming up for the association.
Not for the association, for the kid, ma'am.
Okay, yes, I understand we're coming up, yes. But as, putting myself in Mrs. Tams' shoes, that is not her problem. And she booked it January of last year. And it's not also her, you're having an issue because you had a contract that trumped another contract. And it happened because it wasn't booked when it needed to book. And even though, yes, historically speaking, the rodeo has always been the second week of January. Everybody knows it. We've also, Jason Holland, have you been here?
Almost two years.
Almost two years. So this is your second rodeo or your first year? Is this your second?
Third.
Third rodeo, okay. So, I mean, the ball was dropped regardless. It was dropped. There is an issue. An accident happened. Accidents happen. Is it gonna be such a horrible thing? Yes, I know. Is it gonna be such a horrible thing to move the stock show one year and then go back the next year?
I just explained to you, they can't move it, Commissioner.
Yes, but you're almost screaming and I was going one year after the other.
I just explained to you. I just told you. You can't have a stock show the same weekend that Salada County has a stock show. You can't have, the ones that are gonna lose are the kids. You know how that works. It's not about the association. It's not about me. It's not about anybody in particular. This is something that affects, gonna affect a hundred and seventy to two hundred and twenty kids.
I understand that. We have two wrongs right now.
I feel there's a solution here, but for some reason, we're not noticing the solution, and that's fine.
What's the solution?
That's fine. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what I need to tell you because I just explained to you. You want me to explain it to you again?
Please.
I'm not, I don't know if I have enough time. You're probably asked, Commissioner.
We have time.
I ain't gonna, I'm not gonna entertain you, Commissioner. You vote however you want. I'm not gonna entertain.
You're not entertaining him, asking him to explain the situation.
Vote however you want, Commissioner.
How am I going to vote if you're not giving me the proper information to make an educated vote?
We'll be here till this evening, and I got a lot of stuff to do, Commissioner.
You'll be here till this evening?
Commissioner, you'll vote however you want, Commissioner, with what you have now. I'm going to make a motion. Are you, are you, are you okay moving the date? And with giving you 50% back of what you're, if, I charge you $20 if, if the commissioner agreed to it. Because I don't think money, money is an issue.
Why are you cutting that?
No, 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 I'm trying to find a solution here. Are you willing to move the date? Or you're not willing to move the date? That's the question.
I'm asking Commissioner's Court if they will honor their contract to keep the same date without having to share it with another event.
Okay, Jasmine, what's, what, what time can she go in based on this contract? The day before, on Friday?
At noon is when she comes to fix up the key and then she has all day Friday. But that's only if there's no event Friday. If there's an event Friday, then she can't come.
Till what time?
Till Monday, till Saturday morning.
So there you go. You can come in if there is an event Friday.
There's no way that she's going to take the rest of the day for a week?
But that's what the contract says.
That's what's on the contract.
We're, we're booked already, that's what the contract says.
It was not booked, was it booked?
Jasmine? She was the first.
She was the first one, thank you.
That's what we're saying, this contract only says because it expires in June, correct?
And she, Miss Stamps is asking for us to honor her contract and keep it on that date.
I still wanted to know what the solution was.
I don't have the time, Commissioner, I already told you. I'm not in a fit here to talk about it here.
If you can, so is there a, if it's possible that you can move for the following weekend? If it's available and we don't charge you?
If the association have, hold on, Commissioner, can we have the association have the luncheon somewhere else? Can we have the luncheon somewhere else? So that at noon, at 12 noon or the Friday before, she can start decorating? And we honor the luncheon?
The Friday before is the big, the big sale?
I know, but the big sale ends by 2:00, 3:00.
It's still, it's still going to be. Have they used that whole day up to the next one? You have seen the lines up there?
Decorate in the, in the Friday, in the, in the afternoon. She can go decorate Friday in the afternoon. Because the luncheon ends around 2:00 or 3:00.
We can move, Judge.
So what I'm saying is, can we move? Because what's actually most important is, because the luncheon doesn't even belong to the association. The luncheon belongs to the 4-H parent leaders. That's where the luncheon belongs. It doesn't belong to the association. So has the parent leaders even booked Friday?
No, Friday.
But what I'm saying is, can we, because Miss Stamps is asking, when Miss Stamps is asking, she wants to keep it that weekend. Because she already has the DJ and everything, waiting everything booked that day. So can we, what I'm saying is, can we have, because the most important for the association on Saturday is the buyer's luncheon. Where they feed the buyers that are going to buy the animals for this youth. What I'm saying is, can we have the luncheon somewhere else? To give her enough time, even if, because it's in the morning on Saturday, they can start decorating. And decorate as fast as they can on Friday evening, because the luncheon ends around 2:00 or 3:00.
Did you hire decorators?
No, the luncheon ends at lunch because...
So all of that would have to be resold? And about Friday? If Friday, if someone...
Friday at Big Cell? That, that goes to like...
Anything else, the price that it looks you on 7:03. For a wedding? So what I'm saying is, can your decorator, decorate and have everything ready for the wedding, starting decorating Friday evening? Friday to Saturday.
I would have to check what's available? If we're going to have to change the dates, like again?
No, no, I'm saying, can we keep it? Because you're asking this court to honor the contract in which you went and submitted your contract first before anybody else.
Right.
So of course, like the way you mentioned, I want to say you should have first names, because you, you did it first. You already paid it in full. So what I'm saying is that if the association will entertain having the buyer's luncheon somewhere else, so that that completely clears off Saturday. Friday, the parent leaders do the barbecue. It ends around 2:00 or 3:00. At 3:00, your decorator can come in, starting 3:00 on Friday, to come and decorate. That's what I'm saying. And you keep it that weekend. Because I understand that it's very expensive, I mean, you're, you're...
Is there going to be hectic there? Is there going to be hectic content?
I just don't have to share the event in the way that we can.
We, we...
And that's going to be very expensive. Because they still will be here. I mean, the only other thing I can think of is if Commissioner, whatever, will post to your board and they'll change the stock show to the next weekend.
We already, we brought it up, and we have a meeting today. But that prob, I'm going to say it again. Savala County, Crystal City has their before. Eagle Pass.
It's the same weekend as ours.
So the, when your neighboring counties, you have to coordinate so they can all have your stock show.
So they can get the following weekend.
Cool. Anyways. Look.
So Judge, real quick, just to clarify. Can they have it the following weekend? Here?
It's open at the, at the...
I have the 24 of the baby books, I was going to put her in.
And the Maverick is having their stock show.
We have it the same weekend earlier.
So then the third weekend?
No, they have the second, the following weekend.
Well, ours is the same, the, the Maverick County has their stock show the same weekend earlier.
Hold on, let me look at the calendar.
Because you said second.
Theirs is the third weekend.
Theirs is the third weekend, ours is the second?
Just like this past year. Remember we found out how much they leave the following weekend on their schedule?
Okay, so we're going to June, right? Or January? And we're talking about January the 17th? Is when you booked it? So Savala County is having their stock show on the 10th. And Maverick County is having theirs on the 17th?
That's when you're, where do you get them?
I'm looking at the calendar. January. That's what I'm asking you. When is your, your event booked for?
The 17th.
The 17th. So that's actually the third Saturday in the month. And if the rodeo is supposed to be the second Saturday of the month, wouldn't that be the 10th?
10th. Yes.
You said you have it on the second.
We have the second.
I stand corrected, Commissioner.
You boil for no reason?
I like that word, you boil.
You?
You boil.
So then do you have an issue or not? Can she keep it on the 17th at the, at the rodeo?
Do it on the same weekend? I don't understand, I cannot make that decision because it's not important.
But if, but if we as a court right now approve her that weekend, then you need to take it to your board to change the date.
I'm going to ask you that.
To the 10th?
To what day? What day, what day would you like to start the week?
Look, 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 look. January, first week. Second week is the 10th. But you just said they have it on the 1st.
No, no, no. Didn't, didn't, didn't you say Savala County has their weekend before, Commissioner?
Commissioner, you forgot your whole argument. I'm sorry, I apologize for laughing. It's just that...
We, we need to clarify.
You said that the stock show is always held on the second. Hold on, hold on, hold on real quick, let me talk, let me talk. You said that the, the rodeo always held their stock show on the second week of January. And it never fails, for your speaking, historically speaking, stock show has always been the second week in January. Well, the second week, Saturday in January, is the 10th, not the 17th. So then do you need it on the 10th or do you need it the 17th? Because if you need it on the 10th, the 17th is clear open and she's not going to have any issues because the rodeo is going to be the week before. I, I look here, like...
No, 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 I, I, I believe it's the same. It's the same weekend, because that's how I found out about it, because you have been so many...
So the reason that you might be able to do this is because it's not a full week. But if it's still the second, why can't she move it to the 10th?
Okay, I spoke to Savala County, Commissioner.
The Savala County is having it the first week, they said.
Who said?
You did. You said they have it, you said, you didn't say they have it the first week. You said they have it the week before, so she's...
Can we motion to table and tell he gets the meeting with the stock show? Today? I'm sorry, Miss Stamps.
Do I have a motion, Commissioner? I'm also already to that person who's been telling.
Okay, well then, second.
Do you have a motion to...
Well, because, the, the thing is that I'm going to give him his, his, his due, he needs to go clarify to make sure, is it on the 10th or is it on 17th?
Well, Jasmine, they booked it with her, they didn't book it with me. Jasmine, when is it, the stock show is supposed to be held this week?
Well, if, they still haven't came to book it.
They didn't take your check this week or whatever it was?
No, it was a...
They didn't take your check?
Audrey probably checked with, she didn't do the contract. She, she took it with her, but she hasn't brought it back. But that, that contract is 2020, 2026. So she, when she comes bringing back the contract, she'll book all the days in 2026.
Well, see, it's already reserved, ma'am. She already lost the date. I'm sorry. And I'm not doing it because I don't want the kids to earn any money or anything like that, but they, they just took your check and they didn't sign the contract until it's feasible for them. You don't have a type for them to come up whenever they want to sign a contract. If anything, it should have been done right there and then. And nothing against the kids, nothing against the association. But it's always been a thing here with county that whoever comes up first and signs that contract, it's, it's, it really up to grabs.
It really up to their meaning to let them...
Okay. So your motion is to approve for her to keep the wedding on that date?
Yes, since there's no contract signed.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Calona to honor. Honor the date of January 17th to Mrs. Stamps as previously booked through the contract that she did in this rule. To keep that date. I have a second by Commissioner Calamantes. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have an opposition by Commissioner Oviedo.
So does that more than ever, like the two, three, five, the contract, they can't have it on the 17th?
Yes, they need to have it on the 10th.
They don't, they can't have it on the 17th, but they can have it Friday and Saturday.
Sir, it's another question.
Not Saturday, Thursday, Friday. She don't have anything booked Thursday, Friday?
But she needs to have the key, what time are you, she's supposed to have the key, Jasmine? Friday?
You can't move...
Friday, by doing, but that's only if there's no event the day before.
So right now, there's no event?
And there's no event, so she gets it at noon?
You're right, there's no event.
But if somebody comes and books it...
Listen to what she's telling you.
If somebody comes and books it, I have, you can't, I can't go totally know. If they pay for it, then that they's available technically, then I have to book it.
Is there multiple, well, there's multiple keys to the arena. So then Friday at noon, there's not supposed to be anybody else in that building but Miss Stamps?
That's a good, that's a good Friday.
That's Friday at noon. So when she's, when it's supposed to be turned over to her, she doesn't want anybody else in the arena because she's going to have decorations up, she's going to have expensive things out.
So I, I think we do that more of a, like a courtesy. But by the contract, if there's an event, she doesn't, she can't come in on Friday.
Let me clarify. Ask her the contract, when does she get the key?
The day of, which is, but wait on all the Saturdays, so I send it to come Friday to come get the keys.
So historically speaking, everybody's always gotten the key a day, two days in events?
Yes.
As a courtesy?
Yes.
So if there's nobody booked on Friday, as a courtesy, you're going to give her the key?
Yes, to come, to come and book. But if somebody pays for Friday, Thursday, Wednesday, then she can't go in till their event's...
Okay, but let me ask you this question. It has, it has to be paid.
The, the, not her, the day, the event before her date?
Yes. Because the commissioner says if they go, Miss Kerlu goes and books all the dates to include Friday.
But, I don't know. Do they have it? If she comes and pays Friday, then, then she, she already has the key.
Where's paid, she just hasn't, you know, the contract, but it's paid.
I know, and I know what you're saying. Basically, it's courtesy, and it's, it's a little unfair, if you think about it. Think about everybody else that's gotten married at that, at that arena. And everybody else that doesn't have the headache, the Miss Stamps is having to deal with. But everybody gets it before. But this is the situation again, what we're dealing with. When there is no policy in place, we just do whatever we want to do. I would encourage you, Jasmine, since you're the events coordinator, to propose a new policy for the agreement, because you're the one that's having to deal with it, to make sure that you put little things like this in stone, because there's no way that you can rent that venue for a wedding and turn over the keys the day of the wedding.
Well, it says here on the contract, on G, it says, rent your shop setup and/or decorate one day before your event.
So then she gets Friday.
So then she gets Friday, then?
She gets Friday. That's what the contract says.
What's your, what's your, what's your question, like, what's your confusion?
Because once Audrey turns in the contract, she has it for the 1/2025. And she has a personal key, or not just Audrey, anybody that has a contract. They have a key that opens the door. They don't even have to tell me when they're going in, they just...
We were supposed to be working on a contract for them, because I do know that there's a contract in place for them. But they're not supposed to be misusing the, the key. Just because they have a key to it to open it, doesn't still give them access to just go in there when they're not permitted to be in there. But it's another situation, we don't have a policy in place for that situation.
Again, as Commissioner Alonso mentioned, and what just got approved is that Miss Stamps got submitted her contract, paid in full already. So if her contract trumps anything else, because that contract at first, according to the decision that was made. So if, if the contract says she gets the key before, the day before, she gets the key on Friday.
And it says, under I, keys to the rented space will be available for pickup at the office of the Dimmitt County Event Center the day before your event.
So she gets it on Friday at eight o'clock in the morning.
And the association doesn't use it on Friday?
They can't use it on Friday.
They can't, no, I'm telling you, they don't use it on Friday. Or 4H uses it. Do you all deal with them?
So how they can do that because the 4H does have a contract?
The 4H doesn't have a contract right now?
For the 4H ends in June. I mean, sorry, me, so they have, they already paid since May.
So you do have a contract?
For 2026, yes.
But why you're gonna tell them the key, you said it's from.
I know, but she booked, she did her contract before they did their contract.
The 4H?
Yeah. Because 4H already did their contract.
The 4H just finished in May. And she did hers in January. Or in March of, when you use it in Ashington?
Yeah, January, December, November, December.
Do you have any more questions, Jasmine?
Essentially, so essentially, Jasmine, so essentially, Jasmine, you're gonna have to advise the livestock association and the parent leaders that that weekend is coming. That Friday was Sunday is on the weekend.
But it shouldn't be an issue because the stock show's always held the second week. In general. Sure, that should be.
I don't like credit.
I can buy you some, I'll buy him some, don't worry about it, Jasmine.
Anything else?
I don't hear you.
Your dates, the safety systems, thank you.
I hope you have a beautiful wedding.
Thank you. Thank you. 3.16, discussion and appropriate action approval to hire two part-time students from the summer precinct two.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena.
Uh, Urubukawa, second, baby.
Motion by Commissioner Urubukawa, second by Commissioner Talamantes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Batteries.
Yeah, our batteries for my.
Oh. You want my mic?
I got it, Commissioner, let's see, it's because the batteries are dying, this one has like one little thing. Thank you. Um.
Yeah, it's over, you have it.
3.17, discussion and appropriate action approval of review monthly reports from sports conflict center regarding the progress of construction and budget for new sports conflict facility. It's a double E. Two. So Judge, I had put this one on the agenda because I, I've been asking for the report for some time. Uh, but then you did advise me that you were placing it on the agenda, this, uh, this Commissioner's court. Um, for transparency reasons, you did ask me to remove it, and I told you that I did not want to remove it, so thank you for keeping it on there, um, but my questions got answered. Thank you, your agenda line item.
No action. 3.1.
Eight discussion.
3.18, discussion. I have a big castes de lo con everything. 3.18, discussion and appropriate action approval for Dimmitt Wellness Coalition to take and maintain responsibilities of watering and removing any unwanted fruit from the trees located in front of the Dimmitt County Arena. Precinct three.
I got it, Commissioner. It's working. Am I good? Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner. I'm asking Mr. Pereira, am I good?
Um, I, he advised that they couldn't, but I don't know what he's gonna tell you today.
That was some that's something you need to take up with the county attorney, exactly how that would work. That what we had talked about before, you couldn't keep, because you were asking to give it to them. You're not doing that. So they're taking over maintenance and getting rid of the fruit. That was something you would need to discuss with the county attorney and set up the contract or whatever it needs to be done.
Could it be an excess surplus?
That's why I'm telling you, the county attorney would have to weigh in on, would weigh in on it.
It has to be the county attorney?
Well.
I think the issue is where it runs into them, them maintaining it. There could be an issue there with them maintaining it because it's still our property.
And where the unwanted fruit, I don't know. What is unwanted?
Anything that's on the tree when they get there.
Yeah, well, that's.
I think it can be done because it's already been done.
What do you mean it's already been done?
As a garden, they go over there and they, they clean the vegetable.
But that's their garden, though.
No.
The garden belongs to the Dimmitt Wellness Coalition, we had approved to allow them to use that space, that's why they're using, this is ours, these are the fruit trees that Commissioner Wu had purchased.
I stand corrected.
So that's what I'm saying, it's the county attorney, we have to weigh in on it.
So I'm gonna motion to table, Commissioner, so you can give the advice, motion to table, I have a second?
Second.
Who's second? Motion to table by Commissioner, Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 3.19, discussion and appropriate action approval for each commissioner to take home their assigned iPad if desired for the purpose of preparing and reviewing Commissioner's court documents. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Talamantes. Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 3.20, discussion and appropriate action approval of additional items to the IT surplus list. Mr. Castaneda did disseminate those items list to us earlier today. Um, are there any questions? Do I have a, entertain a motion to?
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamantes, is there a second?
Second. Oh.
You motioned it and seconded it?
I stand corrected.
Uh, Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Talamantes and second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 3.21, discussion and appropriate action approval to transfer employee from utility to road and bridge precinct four. Motion by Commissioner Uranda. Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 3.22, discussion and appropriate action approval for road and bridge four to purchase two portable buildings for the Dimmitt County Football Field from Durkins.
Judge, can you convert them into the concession stand and the rest like the open field?
Motion. Motion by Commissioner, uh, real quick, Commissioner, um, just for purposes of transparency, um, it is by board commissioners, just so you guys know.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Talamantes, second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 3.23, discussion and appropriate action approval to use the rodeo arena June 13th, 2025 for appreciation Father's Day luncheon. Maybe we should change the name of the rodeo arena, too. Because arena sounds like it's just for animals. It says event center, eh? Conference center. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Talamantes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 3.25, excuse me, 3.24, discussion and appropriate action approval of dimmit each ranch road change order number two, add contract days precinct four.
Judge, we want to.
Yes, ma'am.
Days to the contract, so whether?
To extend it, Comish-
Extended.
Yes, ma'am. Motion. I have a motion by Commissioner, to extend it for how many, Commissioner?
Uh, maybe you, or maybe you.
I think I have an increase of this, or you're asking for 60 additional days? Yes, ma'am.
It is for the year.
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urubukawa. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 3.25, discussion and appropriate action.
No action on that one.
That's the same thing, they're just, uh, double, no action. 3.26, discussion and appropriate action approval of quarterly report family served Dimmitt County food pantry. Morning, Ms. Miranda.
Good morning.
Morning, ma'am.
Um, I know we haven't done this before, but I just kinda wanted to give you guys an insight on how many families were serving on a monthly basis. Here recently, we have started to see an increase on our logs and families registered. Um, from last month to the, or two months ago to now, we went up from 360 to 410, just in Corizo, like family register. Of course, not everybody shows up, not everyone picks up, but we are growing as far as families that were servicing. So we, we're averaging about 460, 460, or sometimes like 490 now, we've been going up on. From January, we're 467 families, February, 492, and then in March, 491, so we are going up in numbers as to families that are reaching out to us for assistance.
Does it usually increase in the summer?
It kind of, it does, it does increase in the summer.
Thank you for that, I appreciate seeing those numbers.
Motion.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Ms. Miranda. How can a individual or family go and register to partake in the food pantry?
So it has to be in person, we cannot, we're not allowed to release any applications, we're doing applications online, it has to be in person here at the office.
Okay.
Or at the, the. With the CE's are certified, uh, which would be like, and Biggles would be Ms. Gracie Betis.
Okay.
And Ashton would be Ms. Patsy Galba.
Okay. And they're both available, Gracie's available from eight to three, Monday to Friday, and Patsy.
Patsy works.
It's on, by call, by case, by case.
Yes.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion if there's more questions?
Oh, you made a motion?
I didn't hear you, Commissioner, I apologize. I have a motion by Commissioner Uranda. And second by Commissioner Urubukawa. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions? Motion carries 3.27, discussion and appropriate action approval quarterly report from October through December 2024 food pantry.
That sanitation.
Oh, should say sanitation, um, Ms. McDaniel, you can please correct that it should reflect sanitation, not food pantry. Questions on this? Miranda? I will entertain a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Uranda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urubukawa, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries discussion and appropriate action 32, 3.28, approval of quarterly report January through March 2020 food, 2025 food pantry. Issue reflects sanitation, Ms. Miranda? Any questions? I'll entertain.
Yes. I'm sorry, well.
Go ahead.
And, uh, we're having issues with the freezer, there are the commodities, as Ms. uh, Ms. Stala.
Miranda.
Miranda has a worry. Um, if, if it's not, if it's not the freezer, it's the refrigerator.
You wanna open back with them?
If you wanna open.
Oh, I was, sorry.
If you wanna.
No, that's all right, I'll, I'll be real with you, baby.
We're talking.
We need to take care of, of the refrigerator. It needs to be taken care of.
We, we actually can carry it back.
But just so you can submit a appeal?
Okay, but I.
No, I mean, we can go back and open it for discussion, because I know it needs to be taken care of.
No, 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 that's fine, we're ready to carry it.
I have a motion, entertain a motion for the quarterly report for sanitation. Motion by Commissioner Urubukawa. Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am.
4.1, discussion and appropriate action approval to renew the Dimmitt County jail director for
HABJ.
Issues say jail medical director, Mrs. McDaniel?
Were there any changes to the contract?
There were no changes, so there was just the dates, it expired already, but just everything stayed the same.
The dog and mom's the same?
The same.
I have a motion by Commissioner Urubukawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action approval for Dimmitt County Sheriff to attend the Sheriff's Association Annual Training Conference, July 12th, 16th, and 4th, Texas. Have a motion by Commissioner Alonso.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Sheriff, um, will also, I'll get with you, will also need to do a budget adjustment on your training.
Okay.
4.4, all in favor, excuse me?
Aye.
Any opposition? 4.3, discussion and appropriate action approval to advertise for bids to install emergency lighting and equipment on six patrol units.
Judge, reasonable question, the bids, we checked with Southwest Public Safety, they are by board, but they're like seven, eight months out before they can even install our equipment, and those four trucks are being paid for by the grant. Now, we gotta use that by August.
Were you here with Commissioner, Alonso said that Alvarado's backed up too, right? You said it's been three months that he's been waiting. Unless you can get him the hookup and.
We talked to him, he said it would take like three weeks to order the parts and then like another three to get everything installed on the vehicles up here with us. Uh, I checked with Far West, they're a year out. Again, they got a contract with Tedom. And there's another intense lighting also, that'd probably be another six to seven months also. Now, what would be the process to try to get a contract with Alvarado? I, I know a lot of agencies like Southwest Public Safety, they have a contract with Bear County and SAPD, so whatever they get, they're putting their stuff first, I think that's the reason we got.
We would have to go out for bids for contracts. Put it on the newspaper and then whoever bid, puts in bids and then put it through Commissioner's court and, but we would have to um, have his contract first to look at it, to see what it tells, like a yearly contract?
Yes.
Um, so we would have to put it out for bids, because that's what Tedom does, that's what DPS does, that's what US Border Patrol does, is that they go out for bids for contracts for their lighting and radio systems. So we would have to do the same thing. Um, but like I said, um, I know maybe you'll have better luck than Commissioner Alonso, because he said he's having a hard time.
And I know with the Southwest Public Safety and, and, uh, Far West, they don't include the radar, they don't include the, uh, camera on there, without Alvarado, it's all included. Although we have to order it separate and send it, and get it installed by him or them or somebody else. That's really why I go for bids.
Well, um, this one, you're asking to advertise, so, um, we'll have to advertise it on the paper, um, so we'll get Mr. Pereira to get bids, so do I have a motion, entertain a motion to approve to advertise?
Motion, second.
Commissioner Uranda? Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action approval to purchase a camper for K-9 unit from Far West Specialty Group using the sheriff's forfeiture account.
This was also for you for the K-9 unit, just to put a cover on that truck.
Motion by Commissioner Urubukawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 4.5, discussion and appropriate action, job status report?
Good morning, Judge, um, I'm gonna wait for, I have a few, I'm gonna wait for the the bidding, uh, we had enough time to put it on the Commissioner's court.
For what is this?
For the housing, for the market.
Okay.
Should we want to table?
Yes.
Motion to table, Chris?
Motion to table by Commissioner Urden, excuse me, Alonso Carmona. Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urubukawa.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 4.6.
Judge, also, the jail, we did pass a respect.
Yes, congratulations, Sheriff, and Mrs. Morthes. Four, 4.6, this Monday.
For the sheriff, for the commissioners. Um, I didn't have a chance to put it on the agenda, but I need help if one of you all can lend me the, either the John Deere or an ATV, because it takes us 15 minutes to get down to the pit and then walk back up. And then just get there.
For what?
For the landfill, I need a, either a John Deere or an ATV, just to get, the guys can use for the next Commissioner's court that I put in to purchase something.
Can use mine.
Because they go down the pit on the loader and sometimes they have to come back up.
I would check, let you borrow my, but it's for all of us purposes.
So that way they can move, move around for now. They had a truck, but it's a little bit harder to move up, because the dirt is loose, so it's, it's tough to get in and out of there.
You, you go work, man.
I, I have one, Commissioner.
Just for two weeks or so, that I can.
Thank you. 4.6, discussion and appropriate action Monday. Oh, I thought you were done.
Sheriff, can you guys control, activate, should they start working on the road, so the 18 wheels are not stopping? The guys have all the lights and signs up there, but they do not, please.
I have a traffic law.
Please, thank you. Now, thank you.
4.6, discussion and appropriate action sheriff's report? Sheriff, I do want to, um, on this, since you have a report, I do want to just um, notate that I am extremely, um, I guess, happy to see you have a lot of your guys out and about, um, working the roads and here within the city limits. So, um, I just want to thank you so much for that, because I've I have noticed an increase in police presence than I have at any time before, so I think that's a good thing, I think that people see that the guys and the ladies are out there and they appreciate it, um, so I just want to say thank you for that, because everywhere I look, I see a deputy somewhere, so I think that's really important, um, for law and order, obviously. And it shows that your, your guys are, are involved, so I just wanted to tell you thank you for that, because I see it a lot more often.
Yes, congratulations on passing your extension.
Thank you.
Any questions of the sheriff's report? If I have no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urubukawa. Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you so much. 5.1, discussion and appropriate action approval for 2025, 2026 health insurance renewal? Is that yours, Mr. Pereira, or Mr. Ortiz? Vote. Dang. It's a 11% increase. So an 11% increase approximately, Mr. Ortiz?
11.20.
And those are the increases per, for spouse on a yearly.
And those are the increases per spouse on a yearly basis. This is just the increase. It's 1,125. The child is 368 increase. The children is $794 and the family is $1,500 increase. Just the increase. That doesn't include the actual insurance. So I think right now we're paying like 1.5 billion into our health insurance on a yearly basis. So it's going to increase by 195,000, just the employees.
Mr. Pereira. Normally you and I have like an annual meeting with Clarissa. We didn't, we haven't had it this year because usually that's when we inquire as to why there was an increase. So normally commissioners from the meetings we've had in the past with TAC, there's an increase because of how much the insurance is utilized by the employees. And it'll give us an exact number of, it doesn't give us, they don't give us names, but they'll give us like employee one or employee two utilize it for a heart issue or a liver issue or kidney. And that, things like that cause us to increase the insurance. And I know Mr. Pereira and I were trying to work really, really hard this past last year to do the incentive as we did in December to get our employees to walk, to exercise. Because the statistics show that that leads to less doctor visits. Obviously, the less doctor visits we have, the less procedures, the less surgeries. It decreases our rates that they give us. So is there any way that we can contact them and find out why we haven't met with them this year? I know Clarissa is no longer in our region, but maybe perhaps whoever took over?
Yeah.
Her, because I'd like to see what caused the increase in the rate. Because the last time we were going to stay stagnant is what they said. So obviously something occurred.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, I think Barrow was the one that was doing it this year. And I'll talk, I'll call her and ask her. Yeah, because I thought we were going to have one for this year.
Yes. Yeah, because we haven't had one. So are you asking for us to have it approved or can we meet with them before I know that is, it needs to be returned by next, by the 27th, but?
We're going to have another meeting, but regardless, this is basically what the proposal for next year. So the other alternative would be other options which the employees would have to pay into or do.
So we, so this is a grandfathered in, Commissioner Dubucava, so there is cheaper rates. However, we wouldn't be grandfathered in the sense that the coverage would be different. And with this coverage, we're grandfathering into like, for instance, if you see right there, the $25 copay. So things would change for us to make it cheaper. My, my goal and my, my issue has always been, when I've met with them in the past two years, was trying to find ways. Because I'm sure you have some employees that have their insurance with us, have their kids, and this is very.
I have a call to verify because when I met with Mr. Ace on one of my employees that's out, he had, he needs to pay his insurance out of pocket. So he's paying $763 a month. He just started paying 763. I told Oscar, says, correct, Mr. Ortiz? He was like, yeah.
Yeah.
Money just for one.
And it is, yeah, and it is, Commissioner, and that's why Mr. Pereira can attest to this. The two years before when we would sit down and speak with Clarissa, I always wanted to make sure that whatever it is that we were going to get would either stay the same. Because it's very expensive and I know, I know, I have employees and I know that there's other elected officials that have talked to me that they have insurance on their children as well. And obviously, I mean, it cuts into your.
My children are.
Yeah. No, and exactly.
Back then, thirteen years ago, when I was paying my cover, it was $590. Now, when I saw the 763, I was shocked. It's a dollar mark.
Yes, ma'am. So we can approve this or if you guys want, I can have Mr. Pereira and I call TAC and see if they can give us. I mean, the only good thing about this, unfortunately, there's an increase, right? But the only, the good thing about this is that it's, we're grandfathered in. And to be grandfathered in, I mean, the, the policy that we're in, I mean, it's really, really good. And Mr. Ortiz can tell you that. It's just gotten so expensive.
So long before it needs to be approved?
June 27th is when we have to return this to TAC.
Next meeting or?
June 27th. Yes, sir. We have a meeting on the 23rd of June.
Table it so we can.
But what I was saying.
Even if you table it to call and ask, it wouldn't change the price.
No, the price is not going to change. But what I'm saying is if you guys wanted me to give you other options in regards to like lower rates, I could bring that to you. I do want to advise very, very big that this is a grandfather program is what I'm trying to say.
I don't think we have the time, if the word changed.
We, we could because I called TAC last week.
We can because we have options, but.
We do have options.
That would change the whole.
No, I understand the whole policy and that's what, because I called TAC last week, Mr. Ortiz, and I asked them because I saw the rates. And I have, I have one, I know in my department alone, I have one employee that she pays for her children and that's a lot.
No, no, I said.
At 13, no.
If you change the policy, would it get us where to be grandfathered?
Yes. Once we, once we change policies, we're no longer grandfathered in.
And there's a lot of benefits in being grandfathered in.
That's what I'm saying. I'm advising.
Take advantage of. So that would change the policy for the employees.
So neither one of you, do you recommend looking for other options?
No.
Okay, then I wish.
This is pretty much like the Caribbean health insurance.
Yeah, this is like top, the best of the best. It's just that it's expensive.
Judge, this is what I told the employees when I do interviews that we say we pay $14 an hour. They're like, $14, is that it? And so we're giving you health insurance in ninety days, which is $700. Like you're not paying. The county's paying for that health insurance. So I mean, the $14 will add some good, but at least you're getting health insurance that the county's paying. It is one of the best.
Best insurances.
I, I think that when I had my cancer, I think I paid less than $1,000 out of pocket.
Yeah, it is one of the better insurances, Commissioner. You're absolutely correct. Well, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Alamantes. Second by Commissioner Dubucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. 5.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Between Grants and Planning. Motion. Motion by Commissioner Alamantes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dubucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Between the Courthouse Ground. Motion by Commissioner.
Uranda?
Yes. No, no. He was asking if he's not in motion.
I know, but you were laughing. Oh, you weren't laughing. You were crying.
He boiled over. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's because he sneaks right here. I can't hear. And I just heard him laughing, but he's saying that something else is ringing. Who's second? I'm sorry.
I'm second. I'm laughing because he said he boils over.
Second by Commissioner Alamantes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.4 Claim Docket. I have the general fund, 509,748.93 cents, Dimon County Grants, 1,372.47 cents. Dimon County Airport, 178.99 cents. Dimon County Golf Course, 18,674.58 cents. Courthouse Security, 5,136.51 cents. Records Management County Clerk, 1467.57 cents. Utilities, 80,052.63 cents. Rodeo Arena, 3,070. Stone Garden, 242,355.65 cents. Operation Lone Star Program, 2022, 328,791.97 cents. Payroll, Dimon County Payroll, 654,035.79 cents. Tax Home Series, 2023, 715,002.86 cents. COs, 2017, 65,318.09 cents. COs, 2021, 1,110,695.10 cents. SB 22, 13,703.19 cents for a grand total of $2,756,404.33 cents.
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Ms. McDaniel, the time is 12:20 and I am going to call the Public Facilities Corporation meeting to order that the record reflect that all parties are present. 1.3 Approval Minutes Regular Meeting, May 27, 2025. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dubucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action New Business.
So we have been on getting the AC situated at the water station. We did get the POs approved. We're hoping to get them working on that right now. They resorted to portal units and the facility. So they basically brought their own portal AC units in place to kind of pull down the building. They are having extreme issues with the AC. I do know that we had asked the last time, there was a question of the amount of the repairs. I could go out for bids and you want me to entertain the court by going out for it, but just keep in mind, I was unclear if we were going to, if we weren't. Keep in mind that we had the $500, $500,000 bid for the AC at the rec center in Biggles. So even if I go out for bids, we're still looking past $500 for one AC, not even including.
One AC is $500,000?
But I could still like, it still isn't equalling up to the POs for the repairs. And what we're hoping is that once we repair the units and the parts, it will stop putting a string on the rest of the unit and hopefully we can get it back up and running.
There was an emergency PO commissioner that came in?
Yes, because this last one that came in, the final, the main landing port went out. And so that's when I had to bring in the portable AC units. And that went out on Friday, Thursday.
Is it better to replace all ACs?
I mean, it would be.
Every, every month or every other month, you're coming back for one that's going out.
I haven't had any of the ACs, like we've had, yeah, we've had them worked on. We've had a few of them worked on and definitely the price has gotten up there. But it's still not equalling, the repairs are still not equalling one or two units in your place. Like there's still, there's still time to try to fix it and get a bucket boy. But I do know that it is expensive. So once one completely breaks, that's when we, Mr. Pereira said, if one completely goes down, at that point, we'll stop and then get votes for seeing if we can replace the whole unit. But right now, that announcement is including $500.
Because I'm going to want to wait until it breaks and then replace all of them. So.
I mean, yes, we could, but I'm not, it's going to be, I could definitely go get the numbers, but it's going to cost us.
I know it's going to be expensive, but it's something that we need to do. We need to figure.
And the thing is that these ACs, a lot of them, they were badly fixed on a lot of them. None of them was actually getting like replaced. So for this long time, the last field before I got in was, everybody thought that that was going to fix the issues for the AC there. What they replaced, the last thing that Mr. Carmona replaced was a communication panel. So all that they replaced was nothing in the AC units itself or the mechanisms. It was just a communication panel to be able to communicate. That was the last thing that he worked on, but there was never any repairs done to the actual AC unit itself. Like they were, they did it in the last, I would say, never. They did it in the last two months that he was here.
It was required.
Yes. They just did, there was required. There were things that were down. They just did basic, badly fixes, basically. I do know that he said that he did that because he wanted to make sure that I made with the money to see what I wanted to do. But yes, be conservative. We did get the green shading for the water station. I know that we went back and forth and Commissioner Uranda had, you know, complimented that one time, but it didn't look very good on the fence there. We did take it down. We did know that we were going to continue to have that issue. So we went in, we got with the water patrol station and we were able to communicate with them and they were able to purchase the green shady on the area and we're installing it for them. So it was a great compromise to be able to get them what they needed and still kind of cover us on our end. Any questions?
As I mentioned, I talked to our attorney on the contract, the lease, and there were some federal changes made.
Yes.
And so they're going to have to go back and readjust the contract. There is no problem. They just need to put that language into the new contract. And they'll get it back to us. We'll put it out for next meeting.
Next year.
Next meeting.
If there are no questions, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Dubucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Correct. 3.1 Claim Docket. Public Safety, 2,217.87 cents. Motion by Commissioner Dubucava. Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Entertain a motion to your racist. Motion by Commissioner Dubucava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alamantes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.